To the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Exeter John Patterson Regular Meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, was the clerk's pick and roll?
Dan Patterson?
Yeah.
Michael Faye?
Here.
Diane Allen?
Here.
Vivian DiFrancesco?
Here.
And Cal Ellis?
Here.
Let's see, the knowledge and announcements of Rhode Island Primary is Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Voting takes place seven A.M. to eight P.M. at St. Tietteery Picklewhip Church at eighty-four Exeter Road in Exeter, and then Metcalf Elementary School on thirty News and Hill Road in Exeter. Voters who ordinarily vote at Exeter Chapel will vote at the Metcalf School. Unregistered voters will vote at the Exeter Clerk's Office, six seventy-five Tenrod Road, Exeter, from seven A.M. to eight P.M. with a limited ballot. Voters who wish to vote early can do so at the Exeter Clerk's Office, six seventy-five Tenrod Road, Exeter, Monday through Friday, nine A.M. to four P.M., beginning August twenty-first and ending Monday, September ninth. Mail ballot applications are no longer being accepted. The deadline is Tuesday, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. The last day to register to vote in Rhode Island Primary is Sunday, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. B is transfer station permits expire September thirtieth. New permits for a permit period October one, two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, are available for purchase at the town clerk's office via mail, drop box, or online. See the town website for details. I see. Nine eleven Remembrance Ceremony will be held at the Wall of Honor, Rhode Island Veterans Memorial Cemetery, Exeter, Rhode Island, Monday, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, at nine A.M. I've got two other announcements here. In the last couple of weeks, it's come to my attention, Prime View Apartments on Route Two, next to Oak Harbor, and it's been an ongoing issue, is water contamination with the public well down there. And one of the residents has reached out to Senator Morgan. She contacted me. They're getting no answers from the water operator. The management of the complex is not responding. And nor is the Rhode Island Department of Health, which oversees these. So with the help of the town mayor, Alain Morgan, Friday, I did speak to an attorney at the State House that's going to get on this issue. They're going to get back to me. They put this out there because there was a correspondence from the Social Services Director on Friday night, and I didn't get it over until Saturday morning. The other item is there'll be a special council meeting, September twenty-third. Would that be here at the town hall? At the town hall in regards to the ARPA process. Number four, approval of the agenda order. Does anybody need to move the agenda around?
Move that be approved as presented?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval consent agenda, does anybody need to remove any communications? Mike?
Negative.
Diane? Olivia?
Nope.
Cal?
Uh, two and three, please.
On approval of minutes, town council meeting, August fifth. Olivia, you know?
I was not here.
Okay, so you have to do some votes on that. So. One vote, Olivia wasn't here. Okay, the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the town council regular meeting minutes, August fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and town council regular meeting consecutive session, August fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Number six, vacancies and vacancies. A. Personnel board, nine. Conservation commission? Resignations, none. Appointments, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee members, two needed, to serve a four-year term, beginning date of appointment? I see, continue to oppose. Juvenile hearing board, alternate member to serve unexpired term, ending November sixth, two thousand twenty-six?
No letters of interest received.
Tax border review, alternate member to serve unexpired term, ending August two, two thousand twenty-four?
No letters of interest received.
Public Works workers?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I'd like to recommend, I think you guys seen my recommendations. I did get them off this morning. We have interviews and some really good candidates showed up. I chose, my recommendation is for Aiden Peanut and Aiden Robinson.
Well, I move that those two gentlemen be hired.
Second.
I do have a concern, though. Are they going to be like Aiden, one and two?
You've got to figure that out.
Now you've got two people.
One of them, one of them's in Aiden with an A, and the other one's with an E. You might call him A, I have no idea.
They look like candidates.
Our standing candidates.
Well, good luck with all of that.
Thank you.
I did sit in on these interviews because one individual was related to one individual that already works there, so there's no keep it neutral. Both of them are eighteen years, eighteen years old, and one kid just graduated in June.
Yep.
Please speak aloud.
Oh, okay, both of them graduated. One of them graduated in June, they're both eighteen years old, and they're go-getters, so. They're not afraid to work, they're not afraid to get dirty, so. We've got a motion to, we had a motion in the second chair?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, animal control officer. You had one drop out today?
We did have one drop out, and there was another one that came up, but he, he's a, he's like a sub right now over there. They call him a floater.
Yeah.
He didn't realize the whole task of the job, that he'd be on call, so he's pulled out, but not formally, like the other gentleman did.
Okay, so we're still, still make the post, continue the post, okay? Expiring terms, none. Number seven, uh, public hearings, none. Number eight, public comment. First base of Davis.
Looking at eight hundred K state grant horse in the mouth seems short-sighted. Middletown used one to buy and preserve a fifty-eight acre floor.
Louden place.
State covered more than half the five point four million cost. If that's gone, taxpayers are on the hook now for the new town hall renovations. You were talking about Cananicus last month, maybe it's not too late for Exeter to get that? Complicit means associated with or participating in an activity, especially one of a questionable nature. The questionable act which Mr. Ellis participated in is a creation of yet another defective road, the end of Stoning Lane that does not meet town standard. The gate blocks hundreds of feet of public road. You put that item on the agenda this year to change the map. I'm careful about the words I use. I didn't say you started it, I didn't say other people weren't involved. I said you were complicit. By putting it on the agenda, you are associated with and participating in a questionable act. It's happened before with Brookridge. Millar was supposed to get engineering reports for compliance, he didn't do that, he's also complicit. Max Scheck didn't supervise construction properly, he's also complicit. On Olivia's email, remember when she complained about Gina Ethics on the food bank? Glass House, I guess? There are some differences between her claims and actual events. I put the meeting video and audio on YouTube since the town didn't. I think you should be careful about what you say, make sure it's true, otherwise it's slander or libel. Her email is now a public doc, Cal Ellis read it into a video that's broadcast on YouTube. Last meeting, Mr. Ellis questioned my June three dog comments. He was at that meeting, did he forget? He remembered the ethics director issue, but left out real estate holdings, transactions, income trust, and prison involvement. A treasurer is responsible for the financial operations of an organization. It's about responsibility, not touching cash. If you're not responsible, you're not doing the job. Biden recently stepped aside when his memory and mental capacity became visibly diminished for the public good. His party's prospects have improved based on recent polls. Last few meetings, I was called a bully three or four times. I don't think Mike meant this as a compliment, like in the bully pulpit sense he, Ellis, and DiFrancesco like to use. Bullying is aggression deliberately and persistently directed against a weak, vulnerable, or defenseless target. Obviously, I don't agree with you, but I'll ask, if you think I was bullying, who is weak, vulnerable, defenseless? You? Speaking at a public hearing is a constitutional right. I took my oath to protect and defend long ago, and you all took yours to support more recently. I don't think standing up for the Constitution is bullying, but if so, in that case, I do consider bully a compliment, not an insult, so thank you.
Next is Paul.
Dan, excuse me. I'd just like to make a comment here regarding our bylaws. Town clerk, having heard meeting after meeting, provided us with copies to remind us of our bylaws. And I'd just like to state for the record, section one-one-nine decorum, cessation of address. And before I say this, Dan, I understand that as you chairing the meeting, this becomes very difficult for you to speak to someone who's addressing the council, but I'd just like people to know that this is what it states. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council, shall forthwith, by the presiding officer, be barred from further audience before the council at that meeting, unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the town council. I understand when we approved these years ago, it's a statement of what should happen. It's also virtually impossible for you, Dan, I understand, to make that happen. But I just point that out, particularly in light of tonight's comments. Thank you.
I agree with that, I thought the exact same thing, Cal. Uh, number two, it looks like Paul Pizzano?
Yep. Uh, Paul Pizzano, Dear Hook, whispering fine, wait. I noticed that you put the mailroom on the calendar. Problem still exists. Slut with the windows open last night, and I was joyfully awoken by a six o'clock truck that was a huge truck going up the road. It was very loud, it woke me up. So I just want to know, I hope that this council deems fit to do something about it, and I appreciate all that you worked, thank you.
Uh, next is Amanda Sanford.
So I've never really been to one of these before, I'm not sure how it works, but it probably has something to do with your guys. It wasn't really that big a deal, I just looked out my front window, and they were paving the road, and I saw two guys manipulating a basketball hoop which was dug into the ground off the street on my property, and they were ever so nicely laying it to the ground. So I walked out to the road, and I said, oh, look, what's going on, what's the problem? I've had this here for two winters now, the plows have never had a problem with it. I wasn't really sure why they were trying to move it, or why they didn't come up to my door and maybe ask me to take care of it. But they said, don't worry about it, you know, we'll put it back when we're done. I had a birthday party at my house that day. I come down to see my last guest leaving my basketball hoop was broken. Regardless of how it broke, whether it broke from stress, from the weight of the sand in it, or my initial reaction, I thought maybe a machine hit it, I wasn't really sure. But once the police officer came, it did think maybe that maybe it was a stress break from all the sand, because I had like five hundred pounds of sand in the bottom of it, so it wouldn't move. Lo and behold, I was left with a broken basketball hoop, sitting half in the road and half in my yard. And nobody came up to my door, nobody told me anything, and I just am looking for someone to be held accountable. This three hundred dollars wasted. I had to set up garbage pickup like two months ago, because my husband's got a bad shoulder and a bad back. So if you go by my house right now, you're going to see trash cans a pain eighty-seven dollars a month. I'm just looking to have the basketball hoop removed because it's garbage now, and hopefully be compensated so that I can buy a new one for my kids. Because I don't really think it's right that I should be left with a piece of garbage and no basketball hoop. That's it.
Thank you. No comment? Number nine is new business.
No comment.
Motion, number nine is new business, and this goes back to last month. Motion to rescind and to retaliate the vote taken on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, the special meeting of the town council accepting multi-purpose community facilities matching rent. Some would agree, biding between the state of Rhode Island acting by and through its pandemic recovery office, state agency, and the town of Exeter. Will you give us questions because you weren't absent last month?
Nope, I think that's very clear.
Excuse me?
I think that's very clear of what you're trying to do.
Well, for some people that weren't here last month, the stipulations that the state of Rhode Island keeps throwing under the town of Exeter's lap to accept this money, the first thing they wanted us to do was to, basically, we have to have a whole new financial town meeting because they want the language changed, a change in the resolution that the voters voted to spend that money to buy that building for a new town hall. They want the language changed to community center. Other stipulations are impossible to meet. Every step as you go along, they're throwing more requirements that you don't even know about, and it's just impossible, and a lot of these expenses will be paying out of our pocket until you get through this process, and then for five years after this, after you get this done, for five years, the state of Rhode Island has control of that building. So that's why this was taken, looked at again, and we're following Robert's rules. So I'll put a motion out there to rescind and retaliate the vote taken on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, the special meeting of the town council. Would I word reject, refunding or?
Well, so I think you want a motion first to rescind and retaliate, and then you can make a new motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to rescind and retaliate the vote taken on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Second after discussion? Okay, all right, ahead, Mike.
Well, the biggest thing was, for me, was the fact that the state basically wanted to have control, too much control, over the new annex with occupying, I think it was three rooms, actual rooms. We don't have that many rooms there. And obviously, the big room from time to time, and that's a, to me, that's a deal breaker. But recently, I did talk with Maria, I ran into her, I was doing a speed walk, and she was doing a speed walk in opposite directions, and I ran into her, so we had, we did a lap together. And I had asked last time, the last meeting, if we could use, or we did before, if we could use the, like a booth that we have out here in the other room, it's like a, it's like a pod, it's like a large phone booth for privacy, you can go in there, you can have a phone conversation, plug into whatever you want to plug into, and it's private, and I was told, no. But in my conversation I had with Maria, the town treasurer, a couple days ago, she says the meeting that she was at with town officials, Olivia was there, the other people were there, Jessica was there, the social services director was there, that they said you can use pods. So that changes things a little bit in my eyes, because if you can have three pods, that's, and they're going to recognize that as rooms, perhaps, and that, you know, that's eight hundred thousand dollars, a lot of money, we don't just want to let it go if, if, and I also think that the state has lost towns that wanted to take advantage of the available amount of money that would be divided, I think it's equally, with all towns that would participate. And a lot of towns have dropped out, perhaps for the same reasons, so the amount for each town has gone up. Initially, I believe it was five hundred and twenty-two thousand, and now I believe it's right around eight hundred thousand. So I also think that the state is motivated to, they need to, sad to say, but they need to spend this money. So I, I think that they're not looking to make it difficult on us, they're looking to perhaps work with us. And I think that we should probably pursue it further. Maria had an idea that we could, we could allow it, we could, I'm not exactly sure of the words, but basically, we would see what the state determines, if it's congruent with what we want to do, or if there's some differences, perhaps we could work them out. If we get the money, we don't need to spend it right away, and if there's a problem with the state, we can just give it back. She thought that was a valid idea. So I think that it's something that we should talk about and not just dismiss. She also feels as though, my take, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that you felt as though management of the money, you could participate in. I know that Jessica, I wish she was here, social services director, was disappointed, and I do believe that she wanted to help manage this as well. I've heard that maybe she, she doesn't have experience with that, and maybe she'll have a hard time. I don't know, but I don't, I don't think we should just dismiss it. It's twenty-eight of a million dollars. It's a lot of money for the town, for the taxpayers.
May I speak?
Yeah.
I was at the meeting with Maria, and with Lynn, and with Jessica, with the people from the state. Yes, there are conditions that we have to meet, the state does not control that building. They might control or require us to do three programs a month for five years. It's basically three hours of programming in certain subjects. It's not a huge deal. None of the, we left that meeting, I remember speaking to some of the ladies, and, oh, this is doable. We can do this. It might take some, a learn, a little bit of learning curve, but it's for eight hundred plus thousand dollars for the town, which if we do fail in providing or doing what they want, we give the money back, no penalty. Why wouldn't we try to do that, is my question? Like, people are fighting so hard not to take this money, so we'll have to make up taxpayer money to do renovations over there some other way. I don't, I don't understand that. But everything seems doable, Jessica is fully on board to run the programs, and it would be foolish for us not to accept this and try.
It does not pay for renovations, it doesn't pay for salaries, it doesn't pay for the people in the programs. We have to, it doesn't pay for putting up any of the electronics that we need for doing the IT stuff. It doesn't pay for any of that, we have to pay for that upfront, and I.
Is that true? You were at the meeting, doesn't pay for renovations?
Well, it buys the building, because the way they wrote the grant, it would buy the buildings, and then we could use the ARPA money to do all the renovations, etc.
It's too late, you committed the ARPA money, is it?
This is too much of a commitment. But at that meeting, the, this people from the state gave us several grants that we could go for to pay for fees, contractors, computers. There's other grants that could pay for programming, etc. Like, they, they were very much wanting us to go forward and be helpful, like you said. They're not looking to trip us up, they're not looking to want us fail, they want us to succeed.
I never heard of the state taking back money.
Yeah, they don't want to.
No, they don't want to.
The money is backed by the US, the whole program is backed by and overseen by the US Treasury. So we've already bought the building with ARPA money. The grant only pays for the purchase of the building. So now we're going to have to sit here and figure out one way to, even if you apply for this, there's no guarantee you're going to get it, because number one, basically, we have to do a financial town meeting all over again to change one resolution to make the state happy, they want that. What caught my eye, and then we started going through this, and here it is. We've got this, and that was middle August, this one, the cap community? The fourth allocation, the next steps, this is the deadline for October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Capital projects, go, schedule of work, budget, project timeline due to PRO, which is this group. That is basically, you got to go hire an architect, you got to put out an RFP, and when Lynn showed this to me, she didn't understand what it is, I did it in the construction business, and I told her, in the private sector, we couldn't meet that deadline. We keep getting, every time you go another step, then they throw some, another requirement out. And when you start looking at it, it'll say it's two years before you get this program in place in that building. Now you're committed to five years once it starts, and that's why I put this back on there. I'm not fighting this, it's common sense. This is going to cost probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars out of our pocket before you get to this, and there's no guarantee you will get it, so that's why it was brought back to the table. They keep throwing more and more in front of you as you go along, and Mike was correct. A lot of these towns have dropped out of this program, probably for the same reason. You keep getting, you're not getting all the information upfront, you're getting it in bits and pieces as you go along. So that's why I put that on there, and the reason we're doing, we went by Robert's rules, that's why the vote got pushed up one month.
So the two hundred thousand dollars is?
I'm estimating, right now, you cannot meet that timeline.
We need to, it looks like the consensus is to renovate that building in the future anyway. So is that money that we're going to spend anyway, the two hundred thousand?
No, getting, I'm putting a number out there, around a hundred and fifty. This is where you've got to go hire people at architectural firm, for what you're going to do with that building to get this grant program going. On top of having to reschedule a financial town meeting, I have the head of the board of campuses sitting there, and what's an election cost in time wise?
Well.
Well, time and money, good job. You've got to advertise for how long for the financial town meeting?
That's, it's nothing like an election.
But you've got to advertise for how many weeks for something like this, for a financial town meeting?
So it's, you have to put in paper for a week, and then you post it like a, like a meeting, so a month or so. And then the cost is, really, would just be you guys, right? We have to have the time to have the Secretary of State do the ballot.
They'll be a couple months out, yeah, which would be four, you're way past this on, this, this date here alone is impossible.
Isn't this state for construction, Maria? And where? Like constructing a new facility?
It's renovations, anything in that building.
But this grant can't be used for renovations, I thought, it was just.
It can only be used to buy the building.
For purchase, yes.
We already bought the building, without problem.
Yeah.
So I don't understand how we could.
That's the other thing, how do you do this?
They want, they want it a certain way, so they want to inspect your building so that they can have it the way they want.
Well, they inspected it when I was there, and I walked through with them, and they said, everything is great. They were very excited about the space that they had.
What space?
The big space, and potentially two closets for the.
How much do they think they're occupying?
No, they.
We're going to use it for other things, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
What are they thinking?
They said they, you can use it for other things, like it's not, they just need dedicated little like pod spaces, like you were saying before. That would be the construction part, if there was any construction part.
I wonder if there's a way of inviting a state official that's involved in this to a, an extra council meeting?
We could. We could.
That would be a good idea, because there's a lot of questions that are unanswered, there's a lot of vagueness. I hear things being said, I, I have no proof of any of this stuff, I haven't read it. There are things that have just been said, that I'm told have been said.
Yeah, there's a lot of things.
And I don't like to do things that way, I think that maybe we should have someone here and discuss it with them, and maybe get to the bottom of it much quicker.
May, may I speak, Dan?
Don't ahead, Cal, good job.
Yep. First of all, if we were to move forward and the federal government says, oh, this, this grant isn't appropriate, then it's not on it, so we don't get it. So it's, in essence, we're asking, can we do this? And I would ask specifically to put in writing the fact that we have to call a special financial town meeting to change a resolution, maybe that's what we'd be told. And if we were told that, that complicates the issue. But the bottom line is, I think if we put this application forward, and, and I remember Mike saying two months ago, I think, how can we turn, how can we walk away from eight hundred thousand dollars? And I know that there appears to be, there appeared, there appears to be strings attached. I think, as Mike just said, we need to know specifically what they are. I had quite a conversation with Jessica this morning, I thought she might be able to attend, I guess maybe she couldn't, but she said definitely she would like to try, definitely she wants to work with Maria, definitely she thinks it can be done. However, to Dan's point, if we were to hear some, something contrary, or if the federal government says, no, there's too many loose ends, you can't, you can't go through with this, or as you said, Dan, you're not meeting deadlines, you missed the deadlines, it's over. Because you're right, Dan, we may not be able to make those deadlines as time runs short. I, I think we, I don't think we back off, I know a month ago, I said, yeah, let's reconsider it, and we are tonight. But in the meanwhile, I've had some conversations as well, and, and as to Mike's point, I think we need to talk to people.
Well, it was the opinion of the town solicitor that this would require a new financial town meeting. And I've been working with Ken, we're giving numbers. We own the building, we can sit here, one of the plans is when you do the renovations and additions on this building, there's, there's gonna be another meeting, because do it under our terms instead of the state of Rhode Island, and whoever's at the federal level. It's, it's, you get, like I said, you get bits and pieces from them every time you move ahead. And we're working on moving ahead that way, because the ARPA money's gotta be encumbered by December thirty-first of this year, two thousand twenty-four. So we're moving ahead so we don't lose the rest of that funding. That's what I mean, so that's where I'm at. We're not, we're not fighting to stop this, we're gonna do it the right way to where the town of Exeter and the taxpayers control it, not the state of Rhode Island and the state mandates, who are getting buttoned by a federal program, so there's too many strings attached to it. At least we can control it instead of dealing with someone in Providence.
What exactly do you say you need a new financial town meeting for, what, what decision, what, what decision is this specific?
Because they want this language, the state of Rhode Island, this group wants that language changed, because the resolution that was approved by the voters, and that was two thousand twenty-three, was for a new town hall facility.
Didn't Jim say that the names Town Hall and Community Center were interchangeable?
No, his opinion was that they wanted that language stricken and changed, which you just don't do, that goes back to the voters.
Right.
So, yeah.
Dan, excuse me, I, I'd just like to make a point of clarification. You speak about the state of Rhode Island, this is actually a, 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 a subgroup, an annex, uh, it's not the state, it's a, it's an office, it's a department that's trying to push some federal money out. Of course, we all argue that federal money ultimately is our tax dollars, so maybe we don't accept any federal money, as other towns apparently have done. But I'm, I'm just curious, as Mike says, to have some questions asked, I'd really like them to say, yes, you've gotta have another meeting. I, 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 personally, I would say, are you kidding? Are you kidding? Is what I would say, but I wasn't there.
I would take, I would listen to my town solicitor's advice in regards to a financial town meeting instead of a half a dozen people in office up there in the state house that aren't attorneys.
And what did he say?
He said that you need to do another financial town meeting to change that resolution.
Did the state come back and say that actually to us?
It was in writing.
It is somewhere.
She, um, they told us at the meeting, right? And the next day, when I wrote, she wanted to know if we were gonna change it, I said, well, I, I can't tell you that, the council needs to decide that, so
I remember reading that.
Next meeting, and when I told her about last month's motion, she asked me again, did they decide that? And I said, no action was taken, because, none of it, so that's as far as it went, she hasn't contacted me about it again.
If we go back to them and say, we're not going to change that resolution, or is this definite? Because at that meeting, I remember her saying, well, I don't know, we'll see, I'll talk to whoever, and-
She was gonna talk to the Treasury, I can ask her if she ever did, and if she got an answer from them?
Yeah.
You know, here's, here's another point, if, if the end of October is a deadline, and we have to hold from this point forward some special meeting, I don't think we can do it. So I, I don't think timewise, we, we may possibly be able to do that. But I honestly think if that's what they're telling us, and they really don't wanna push the money along, so I'd, I'd like to get some other answers, and if they say, no, federal government's not buying it, or we won't allow it, then, then it's done. Then it's done. Then it's done.
So you'd like to move this to the October meeting?
I didn't say.
Can we just write a letter and ask if the state will accept us not changing? What the taxpayers say?
There's gonna be other, it's gonna be other variables, there's gonna be other variables, why can't we have someone here? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have someone else here to talk to.
Yes, Dan, Dan, to your point, to, to your point, moving it to October sends a message to them. You want us to do it, come down here and tell us why we should, because it's on the agenda and we're on the verge of. We can't meet your deadlines.
Well, that, that's what it was, when this one come through, and then I dislike, and then that language, I'm like, no.
I hate it.
And what are they gonna do in the next step, you don't know.
Then we say to them, okay, then we'll give you the money, you take it back, because you failed, not you, not us, they failed to do what they need to do.
So there's a motion on the table?
Two.
Rescind and retaliate the vote taken on seven twenty-nine, twenty-four. Do we need to vote on that?
Move the question.
You wanna move it to next one?
Call, I meant call the question.
Can we amend that to move?
Vote on that and then make a new motion.
That's correct.
To be correct.
All in favor to rescind and retaliate the vote taken on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four?
Aye.
Aye. What was that?
I said nay.
You did, okay, I thought so.
Are you calling for nay, there were ayes and nays?
What's that?
Well, you- Mike, Mike was anxious to tell you.
You want to ask, Mike, no. Diane?
Uh, yes.
Um, Olivia?
No.
Thank God.
No.
So you have a new motion?
Okay, what do you wanna do, Cal?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, that means- So they didn't, they didn't rescind the vote, they didn't rescind last month's vote. You didn't rescind last month's vote, so vote, vote, vote last month carries.
Not last month, it was some, previous month, right? June seventeenth, yeah.
I still would like a meeting next summer, no matter what.
I would, um-
So you wanna send correspondence to them to have them meet with us and discuss this?
Yeah. Actually, so the townspeople, the town council people, so townspeople.
Well, I'm not sure, Lynn said there was a little blurb here, I mean blip, so if you wish, I'll, I'll move that we rescind and retaliate the vote. And then when we vote, we won't rescind it.
You just voted opposite of what we wanted to do?
It is, but I thought, Lynn, you said there was an issue the way we just voted.
The way it is now, the way it was voted, the vote that was taken on June seventeenth was upheld.
Yes, that's what we want.
Yes, it was three yeses and two noes, so it was the vote, the motion was to rescind and retaliate- I mean, yes, three noes, two yeses, rescind and retaliate the vote taken on June seventeen. Three noes and two yeses, so-
Correct.
No, don't rescind.
That is correct.
So the vote won't be carried, and that was taken on June seventeen.
So back to where we were in June.
So you don't wanna make a motion?
A, a move that we moved, that we considered to say, um, uh, again next month. Anywhere it needs to go.
We need to invite-
And invite-
Oh, yeah, invite, invite people to come and tell them, and inform the, the office of whoever's distributing that we're gonna vote, we would like someone to be there at next October first meeting to keep this item on, on the agenda for next month. Tell them we're on the verge of rescinding.
So is there a second?
Second.
I think they should know, we're on the verge of rescinding.
And can we invite them to our next council meeting?
Yes, definitely, but to prior of it.
October. Okay, is there a vote on that?
With their motion in a second.
Yeah, I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, B, community facilities grant-
Did I, was I going to ask them about that, um, or you're gonna ask them next month about the resolution? You're gonna discuss that with them next month?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Resolution and whether we have to have a new town, um, a new financial town.
So you'll discuss that with them next month?
If you could, could you ask them that in an email? Because that would negate them even coming if they say no. Right.
Is that the only issue?
Uh, this one, I think so for now, kid. Uh, because B kinda rolled over into A.
So that one's gonna carry?
Yeah, B, community facilities grant request by office of pandemic recovery solicitors opinion regarding purchase. A seven forty-two ten, I wrote a revision to June thirteenth, revision to June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three financial town meeting resolution number thirty-seven, new town hall facility, which we discussed, and that was all in that stack, so. So we can leave that on there for next month. Okay, now the next one, uh, this one here, consideration of emergency ordinance to grant the power to conduct zoning inspections within the town and fulfill the responsibilities of the zoning inspector as set for in state law to one or more other individuals temporarily while the elected zoning inspector is incapacitated. A week and a half ago, when a zoning inspector had an accident, who ended up in the hospital with some broken bones. So this is a very important position in town, and this was, we worked on this like late last week. It's an emergency acting zoning inspector ordinance, so we can get, uh, someone in here to do the job of issuing zoning things, zoning certificates and inspection power in the field. Do I need to read this thing?
So you don't have to read the whole thing that I want to, whatever you're gonna have to say, I mean, some by our phone?
I mean preamble, I can do the declaration of emergency and then the rest of this, once it's voted on, on public record. Preamble declaration of emergency. Town council, upon due and proper consideration, finds that A, section four oh nine and four eleven of article nine of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter grants the town council the power to enact ordinances to meet a public emergency affecting life, health, property, or the public peace. B, no person may presently exercise the powers and duties vested in this zoning inspector by the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter, any town ordinance, or any state law, other than the duly elected or appointed zoning inspector. The town of Exeter conducts zoning inspections, issues zoning certificates, conducts zoning enforcement activities authorized by state law and town ordinance. Unfortunately, I'm D, the duly elected zoning inspector was seriously injured, is currently incapacitated and unable to perform the duties of his office. E, the office of zoning inspector is elected under section six oh eight B of article six, of article eleven of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter. The office of zoning inspector is currently not vacant and therefore not subject to section six oh one of article eleven of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter, which would permit, permit the town council to appoint a replacement to fill the office of zoning inspector until the end of the current term. G, the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter is silent on how to proceed during temporary incapacity of the zoning inspector. And H, the town council hereby finds the zoning inspector's presence and ability to conduct zoning inspections, issue zoning certificates, and conduct zoning enforcement activities authorized by state law and town ordinance constitutes a public emergency affecting life, health, property, or the public peace pursuant to section four eleven of article nine of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter, and that this emergency requires the immediate adoption of an emergency acting zoning inspector ordinance for the preservation of public health, safety, and welfare. Can I read the whole thing, we can make it public record?
No, I don't agree with that.
Okay, section two, appointment of active zoning inspect, inspector or inspectors. A, in accordance with the above stated findings of declaration of emergency, the town council hereby vests the chairman of the town council with the authority and discretion to select from time to time one or more active zoning inspectors. B, each acting zoning inspector shall be qualified by education or experience to perform the duties of the position, but need not be a qualified elector of the town. C, each acting zoning inspector shall be vested with all the powers and duties vested of the zoning inspector by the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter, any town ordinance, or any state law, for the date of their appointment until the date of their discharge. And D, each zoning inspector shall be considered an official officer or employee as that term is used in section two dash fifty-one of the code ordinances. Section three, term, each zoning inspector, each acting zoning inspector shall serve at the pleasure of the town council and may be discharged with or without cause upon majority vote of the town council or informed thereof. B, each acting zoning inspector shall automatically be discharged when any of the following events occur. One, sixty days elapsed from the date of this emergency ordinance enacted, if not extended before sixty days elapsed pursuant to section four eleven B of article nine of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter. Two, the town council repeals this emergency ordinance for three, seven days elapses following the elected zoning inspector declaring in writing to the town clerk that he is able to resume his duties. C, if this emergency ordinance is extended under section four eleven B of article nine of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter, no acting zoning inspector will require reappointment, and their appointment will continue unabated until the zoning inspector is discharged, under, acting zoning inspector is discharged under this section. Section four, the emergency ordinance shall take effect upon passage, so remain in effect until one of the following events is pursued. One, sixty days elapses from the date of this emergency ordinance enacted, if not extended before sixty days elapsed pursuant to section four eleven B of article nine of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter. Two, the town council repeals this emergency ordinance for three, seven days elapses following the elected zoning inspector declaring in writing to the town clerk that he is able to resume his duties. B, this section is without prejudice to the town council's right to reenact this emergency ordinance in accordance with section four eleven B, article nine of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Exeter.
Move its adoption?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Question, Mike?
I don't know.
Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to open a, motion to open a public hearing if anybody has any questions on this emergency ordinance, any motion. So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody in the council, any questions? Anybody from the public? Go ahead, head.
The, is there an anticipated date for when the zoning inspector, current one is expected to come back? Number one, number two, do you have to post these positions? Or can you just fill in?
Yeah, we're looking for people that are qualified.
So it doesn't have to go through the posting procedure?
Excuse me?
It doesn't have to go through the posting procedure?
It has to be posted, yeah. First question, who's it?
Any expected return date for when, how would it come back?
I don't really know. I haven't talked to him in about three days, so. Any other questions in the public? Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to be clear, I'll be answering the actual orders.
Oh, okay, now that we're out of the public hearing. Motion to approve the emergency ordinance to grant the power to conduct zoning inspections with the town and fulfill the responsibility of zoning inspectors as set for in state law to one or individual that is temporarily while the elected zoning inspector is incapacitated.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is IT Department request to use ARPA funds for website. Change, put in data.
No, and he gave you that memo where he's looked into pricing and he just wants to know, he's going to try to see if it's on the, if he can find it on the MPA.
Didn't we set aside $50,000 for websites from the ARPA money?
That was the original.
Not that it would cost that much, but if it did, like, so there's money we've already.
Earmark.
Earmark money for this.
I think the allocation's got a little
Yeah.
because of the different requests that came in. But originally, there was $50,000 that was potentially set aside.
So we can put this out there too, correct?
Yeah, he said if he didn't find it on the MPA.
It was approved, but it finally.
Got off the money.
Yeah, but he has to, whatever, he has to.
If he just pointed on the MPA.
Yeah, okay, on the state business, okay, all right. Motion to grant the IT Department request to use ARPA funds for the specific job of a new website?
So moved, second.
I, yeah, I, I support it, but, you know, the comments he made, I think, were important only because so many have asked us for more information and how, how everything could be more accessible. And he realizes that this is the way to do it. So he says it's expensive, but it was expected. Twenty-five, thirty-five thousand, depending on the options. And then he asks about bidding, whether or not, I guess he means if it's on the state list of, because he says that Civic Plus bought out the other, what we have currently. I had a conversation about this a week or two ago. So I, of course, support the motion, Dan. I just thought the public should know what he's talking about here.
Uh, next.
No, we're going to vote on the motion.
Okay, there we go. We did.
We bow into discussion.
Calvin started discussing after the vote.
I interrupted the vote. Sorry, Dan, I interrupted the vote.
It was five in favor. I of D is Emergency Management Department request approval memorandum of understanding for the towns of Exeter and West Greenwich. Multi-jurisdictional hazardous mitigation plan.
Good evening, honorable town council. I am pleased to say that we have an agreement on our MOU thanks to the very hard work of Ken, thank you, and Cal.
No, no, Ken. I just want to.
So we have the agreement between West Greenwich and Exeter. It's essentially to say, because we have to pay for the work upfront, so we're getting the money from West Greenwich. And there's other, other details in there, but it was a really important piece to get before we could proceed. So I present this to you as a signed document. And if you accept it, then I will ask if you could give authorization notice to proceed, so. Any questions?
Well, I, I, while you're checking it out, I'm going to move that we approve this MOU. I, I say that because it's exactly the way West Greenwich Town Council proceeded. They moved to approve of the seconded, and we moved on. So I'm making that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So the con, the contract will have to be signed then, once this was, that was my thing that was holding up?
So if, if, that has been approved, it's okay to sign.
Okay.
So I, I think the signature one is, is, am I remembering that correctly?
Oh, wow, they didn't sign, he didn't sign the contract because.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the.
And the one we need to get copies for is. Do they have that?
Okay. Okay, next is. F, Emergency Management Department request for approval of Town Exeter 2024 Election Incident Action Plan.
Good evening. The town council directed the emergency management director to write and publish today an emergency action plan. So I worked with our board of canvassers. The MOU was very helpful in putting together the action plan. We also worked with the state election board to get the details. Essentially, it's what happens in emergencies. So be a weather, some kind of disruption, so that the, the election process can continue. So I present this to you. Essentially, it's, everyone's got phone numbers. How do, we were a little concerned about security. We also have our town sergeant, who will be, and his, his representatives at each polling place, so that we have, we have the, the coverage that we need and any backup in case of, in case of disruption or something.
May I add?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, I've been in touch with the state police. And we will have a, one phone number, a direct contact with them and the moderators at each polling place will have that number. So if there are any questions that they wanted, please, they are.
I move to approve this incident action plan for discussion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I, I note that Dory says that she may want to meet, may, and going forward, there might be small modifications if there needs to be. And I think Dory should understand we give her that leeway and authority if she needs to. But at least we have an incident plan in place.
Thank you.
It's a first, and hopefully one we never need.
That's correct.
We have a motion? All in favor?
Aye, thank you, Dory, for drawing this together.
G is Emergency Management Department request approval directors 2025 training conference travel budget. I have a couple issues with this one, Dory.
Okay.
There's $9,000 in that budget for supplies and everything else. And project management certificate for the university.
Yes.
At almost $3,000. I mean, I can't approve that one. I mean, it's for project management, I do project management. It's not specifically geared to emergency management FEMA.
I super respect.
The other one is National Hurricane Conference, and that's another one, $2,500. I can't support that kind of money falling out. I mean, I do conferences, I don't do them every year. I'll skip them for two or three years because it's, well, a lot of them, don't take this as an offense. It's just, you know, you got some seminars to go to, and then everybody's out walking around town, whatever, so. But those two items add up to almost $5,500 out of your budget, so. The rest of it, I don't have any issues with, still. Any else have any questions?
Patrick, have you heard those before, or anything?
Yes.
What's supposed to happen?
Networking is invaluable. The, the information that I get from other emergency management departments has really helped me promote and get programs started here in Exeter to, to how to proceed. And it's, it's really been very beneficial to the town to have those networks, to have the FEMA contacts. Those are, those are where I need those people. Those are where I have now, today, I could, I have a whole new network of people to get things done, projects done.
Is there one more important than the other?
No, I mean, the hurricane conferences every year. It's sometimes in New Orleans, or sometimes in Orlando. It's preparedness, it's all the things that, that, the programs that I'd like to see come to the town so that we can prepare our, our events for hurricane season. The new tools, the National Weather Service, they always have a very good presentation of their latest tools and that are free for us to use. So we're going about the new, the new technologies at these, at these conferences.
And all this falls within your budget, right?
Yes.
They're not going over budget.
So maybe what you're saying is you've been doing it already, maybe you skipped a year? Maybe you could do one of them next year?
Yeah, we, I could do that. And then the, the project management course is really, that's all that's coming reforming now with, with emergency management programs, hazard mitigation plan that we just are moving forward. That's all going to be about project management, mitigation actions, so. I understand that's a big chunk, but that's what the process is, so, okay.
I move, I move for discussion approval of, of the budget we class.
Second.
What was that, Calvin, here?
Move for discussion.
Yeah.
First of all, Dan, I know you suggest that people go to these conferences and conventions and walk around and enjoy themselves. Sometimes that's probably true. I'm not so sure that's why Dory goes there. However, maybe she's just going for a good time, but I don't think so. And I, I think maybe your, your concerns have been voiced, and perhaps she'd reconsider. This is not a mandate that this money be spent. She may decide it isn't appropriate. I would like to read for the record that she's just, she's given to us a, her certificate of completion for the Emergency Management Institute, which was just held in, was this the Baltimore program that you were in? So I assume it means you were there and participated and came home with, back with more information. And I think the fact that you haven't known this position for a long time suggests that you might still be learning and growing. And so I think this might be one way that helps you do that. So that's why I made the motion that I made. I understand Dan's concern, and I know Mike said maybe every other year, that might be something you'd consider. Doesn't mean you must spend this money. It needs, gives you a ballpark approval if you need to go.
I'm just afraid that, what if we have another emergency and we need to spend those funds, like the fire? Who can tell about the fire?
Right.
I hear it's not going to be a horrible hurricane season this year because of sand, or. Fire, or maybe, yes. But, so maybe you could cut that one out this year. I don't think that's going to be the case.
I also want to say, in her department's defense, that I don't think there's going to be an emergency, and I hope there isn't, but if there is, we're going to be really happy and grateful for her being here and all the work that she's done to be somewhat prepared, a lot more than we were before. That's important to recognize, the importance of that if we ever did need it.
Yeah, there's a lot of plans that need to still come up to speed and so, and I can do that training with less cost, so. I, you know, I can, I can still continue the good work.
I certainly don't want to demotivate you because you're doing, I don't believe you did a great job.
I'm going to speak this one more, this once more, I promise. I had a conversation with Stefan a couple of months ago. In that conversation, I suggested that Dory's been very busy. She's been, she's taken a lot, she's taken on a lot of initiatives. And his answer to me was, well, she's doing a lot of things I never really got to. Part of that, of course, was because of COVID, which completely sucked out his time from anything else he might have achieved. But he spoke to me and said that Dory's crossing a lot of Ts and dotting Is he never let to do. And that hazard mitigation plan that we're moving to it, that was quite outdated from what I understand.
Yes, 2009 was the last time it was.
And it was supposed to be updated.
Every five years.
I see. So instead of 2014, now it's 2024. And FEMA funding reimbursement depends to some extent on that plan being in place?
Certainly, it's the National Incident Management System. It's, it's the whole umbrella of how all the plans fit under. And the FEMA, FEMA funding, you need to be compliant with, with a framework in order to get them made work. So that's what I'm working on, is getting those pieces. Hazard mitigation is one of our emergency operation plans, another continuity of operation planning. They're all part of the umbrella framework that I'm working towards, complying.
Well, I'm going to tell you though, I know it said it was going to say it now, but I, I don't have my head wrapped tightly around what she's doing. I know I'm the liaison, but you know what? I think we have to trust the people that are working for the town to do what needs to be done. So I won't say anymore about this.
I'll make a motion, Cal.
I did, I think.
You have a second?
Yes, I second.
What was that, a motion?
Motion is to approve the request.
Certainly, I have a question before we vote. If, if, if we both know, what, what happens with the other items on that list?
All of it disappears, which I'm. Kind of that's the motion, yeah.
I'm choosing to trust Dory's judgment whether she goes to these things or not, whether she needs to gather this information for the good of the town or not.
Well, she didn't, she didn't mention that she skipped a year.
I could.
And going to she.
That's what I'm saying, I deducted the $2,500 from the conference.
Okay.
And it comes to $5,494, call it $5,500. I'll make a motion to approve $5,500. amend the motion.
Proceed your motion, Cal.
To approve $5,500 for the schedule.
We have a, we have a.
Set a amendment to the.
So how do we handle this?
Make some amendment to the motion.
Well, he has to, can you amend his motion, or does he have to amend his own motion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I will amend Calvin's motion to fund the travel budget for fiscal year 2025 for the emergency management director to $5,500 even.
Do I vote on the amendment?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment? Aye.
Aye.
No, after you're calling for a no vote, I say no.
That was through the two.
Is amended motion, what you just said, so I can recall the vote on the motion to actually approve that?
Motion to approve $5,500 for the emergency management department's approval for fiscal 2025 training and conference travel budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I would, I, come back to this if you really want more money, would you please? I vote, I, come back to us if you really want more money, would you please?
So is that four, yes was one?
No.
Would you go?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So there's no action on the first one?
So it doesn't amend it?
Yeah.
Didn't see that before, but...
The first.
Okay. Each Emergency Management Department request for emergency, emergency management assistant, you get five thousand.
Yes. Well, to that point, Maria, I had a conversation and I looked to request that the budget be increased by ten to fifteen thousand in order to get the talent that we would require.
That's not going to happen until you get a financial balance meeting, so...
But it would come from the continuous discretionary funds.
If voted, if council wants to. Or, or allow for a go over budget on that line, I don't need to be assisted.
Yeah, fifteen grand when the budget is for five. So that one I can agree with, so... Because I know at one time Stefan did have an assistant and then he didn't want to fill because he was using that money. One time it was, one kid was doing some computer programming for him.
Sure.
But I mean, to sit here and just start, I mean, this is the approved budget and we start sitting here adding jobs and adding money, eh, I don't think so.
It is part of the ordinance to have that I shall have deputy in emergency management.
Well, I'd rather be in violation of the ordinance than having taxpayers mad at me for adding. I mean, if you want to hire someone with a five thousand dollar line item, that's not a problem, but to sit here and hire someone fifteen grand?
This is highly technical.
Well, I've got, I've got shortages in other departments in that town hall that I can't fill because we don't have any money, so...
There's, there's an ordinance that says you, you, you have to have a deputy? Can anyone here confirm that?
The ordinance requires.
Yeah. So you know what ordinance is?
No.
This might take a little bit, so...
Okay.
Try to go to the middle room?
Yeah.
All right, take your time.
I sent it in the job description.
He sent it in the job description. Yeah, but that doesn't give it, it's a, it's a lot to be done.
What says it in the witness stuff?
What, what?
It says we should, shall have, we have five thousand budget for assistance. Actually, it says assistance. What's that?
I will have assistance.
I, I can't agree with one. Another ten or fifteen grand discretionary fund in adding it to the budget that was approved by the voter, there's a budget in town meeting. The update, yeah, so... Because like I said, I've got a department that needs help, that I can find those stuff. Okay. All right, so I mean, you're more than welcome to. That's basically what Stefan was doing, was he'd take that five thousand, he'd be on the job. Like I said, that one time there was a young kid that was computer savvy and helped him somewhere else. Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Town Sergeant, aye, request for increased detail rates. You need to speak to the scope? I saw it, I don't have any issues with it, yeah.
Unless you have any questions? What is the cost? I do have a question.
Just so the town people, that doesn't come out of our budget. No stop guard.
Are they?
That's what I thought, my stack.
Where the heck did the paper?
What is the, what is your card? We're currently at fifty. Coventry's at sixty-two, Charleston's at sixty, Narragansett's at sixty, Richmond's...
I misplaced my paper, what is, what are you asking for?
Fifty-five. For fifty-five.
Why don't you go to sixty? You ought to get sixty.
Because I meant fifty, I didn't want to jump ten. I'm just, I'll do it in increments. Because right now, Richmond's at fifty-six, so I'll just be a dollar below them. Cockington's at fifty-five, so I'll be the same with them.
Is that with the car?
No.
No. I was going to say that's a little cheap.
Correct. Just trying to be competitive because I already lost, well, I didn't lose them, but they've been working in other towns because they're getting more money.
Yeah.
And is this sufficient not to lose them to other towns?
Yes.
This month.
This month, yes. Yes, Cal, this month.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, new, uh, detail rates increase for the Exeter personnel working on road details.
Second.
Okay. For discussion, I'm going to add, it was last Thursday, the scope does a lot of details at no charge. And we were doing work for the volunteer fire company and he was there all day with us at no charge. He volunteered his time, eight hours, we were there, so... I have no problem. All in favor? Aye. Public information signage at town properties, that is you, Rob, correct?
Ben, right.
Is that the one for the parking lot that you and you were talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought it was the one for the town signage. Yeah, I'm just getting a lot of reports lately about illicit activities happening inside some of our parking lots over the evenings. My workers have seen it during the daytime too. It's not good, there's a lot of trash. We've even seen hydrodermal needles being left behind and things like that, so I recommend that we put up signage, including this parking lot, town hall, seven forty-two, you know, all of them for dust till dawn, for it to be where you're trespassing.
Do we need that sign or is it, is it only understood?
Well, I got, I took, I, I called Jim on this and he told me that it was the best way to put a sign there and the information's there, so when we call the police and you are, um, trespass, it actually has T. We had, uh, just, just so you know.
You can trespass anyone, I mean...
Not to debate with you, but it's understood that they can't...
Another sign.
Hey, listen, Mike, they're living over there at the ball field. They had for about two years, living there.
The one issue we had, I called them because they're not there all the time, or was it two and a half, three weeks ago? Now they got clothes lined up drying their laundry.
There's two of them there. There's one using the bathroom, on the ground.
Has anybody called the police yet?
I'm sorry?
Have we, has anyone called?
No, but I'm getting complaints from residents and my own workers seeing, um, real, explicit activities happening during daytime hours, which, you know, um, it's not pretty sight. It's not what I believe should be going on in town exit out here.
One of the public facilities.
It's, you know, so I'm talking a sign like this, but the word itself says trespassing. Then we've got some T. Once they get trespassed, then, right now, they can just say remove, they'll be there again. So I think it's necessary, from what I've heard and seen myself, that's going on out there.
Did he say trespassing or no loitering or?
Yeah, I was thinking more along the lines of dust till dawn, no trespassing. That keeps them from sleeping overnight there and maybe they move on somewhere else. There, there's new laws on the books that we can get these people that are homeless out of there immediately. Again, I talked to council, council recommended me to put up a signage stating no trespass and dust the dawn. And then from there we can, what, state police?
Something new, I've never seen this before. This is something...
What's that?
These people that are...
Well, right, it, it's a homeless problem, you know, and, you know, things that change in demographics, you know? But it, we had one live there all last year, live there, antenna runs, car, I'm not even kidding. So it's becoming a problem. Before, can you bring it, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need some.
So, you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to install no tre, uh, not, yeah, no trespassing, dusted on sun at the public buildings, not public buildings.
Second. Any other discussion?
Whatever language he, whatever needs, no trespass, no loitering, whatever. If you check with the police to tell, you know, tell you what it really should say.
To what council tells me we have to put on there, right?
Okay.
More than a police.
Well, sure.
That's who I, that's who I initially made the call to. That's why I'm here today, because they told me to bring it before council.
Good, whatever.
So I'm working my steps to answer them.
Don't trespass, I think, dust till dawn, police take notice?
Yeah, something simple like that. And it can be tiny, it's just got to be there so they're aware of it when they do get cited and then they violate it, then they get something really not to come back.
Okay. So we had a motion?
Yep.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Item K, request of Peter Posk on behalf of Tim Shartner's Rhode Island Rose for lighter support required for grant to positive development corporation. Mr. Posk, here.
I am, thank you.
Come on up so we can hear you.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Patterson and Council. So I've been with Rhode Island Rose since last October. Prior to moving back to Rhode Island more in front, I was running Johnny Selected Seeds in Maine, so moved back here when my parents got sick.
Did you plan?
I'm sorry?
Did you run it or?
I was a CEO.
I buy seed there.
So it was, it was myself. It was actually an employee owned company, so it's actually owned by the employees, so... But I was a CEO.
Okay.
So in any event, I've been working with the Rhode Island Rose since last October. The intent is when we're fully funded and operational, I'll be the CEO there. And two months ago, I was unfamiliar with the Quonset Point Development Corporation has a, they're managing a state grant program called Rhode Island Ready. So I emailed, and I brought, it's a one page, but I, I knew nothing about it before. Somebody from Quonset Point Development Court suggested that we apply for a grant. It's to support any new businesses. I don't know what criteria they use. I know what criteria they use to apply for it. So we sent in, it's a simple one-page application, but it's up to them to decide whether or not you'll actually get any amount of money. One of the requirements on the application is a letter of support. Chelsea Seifert's, the chief operating officer, she said either a letter of support or a letter that says the town doesn't object to this venture. So it's, it's nothing to do with, um, the planning board just had their, completed their review process, which we passed a week ago Tuesday with unanimous vote. So this has nothing to do with that. This is strictly a grant program through Quonset Development Court. And it's really just up to the council to, to say we're not opposed to this project. So they need a letter, so Chairman Patterson suggested bring this before the council.
And I can't make that decision by myself.
No, and the council would take a vote as, as to whether the council would take a vote to approve such a letter, so that's why I'm here. And if there's any more...
Is there any template or something they're requesting or just a simple letter?
It's just that, in, in fact, I forwarded what Chelsea had sent in.
You would open it.
It really wasn't even a template, it just said, it just said, Pete, it doesn't even have to be an official letter of support, it's just something that says the town does not object to whatever business you are...
We don't object to any industrial development, because that's what this says. This is industrial development, but you're a farm?
Yes.
And we can't tax you? Like, this is, I object. I know that you'll probably get your letter from this council, but when the development, the, the place that is giving you the grant calls your operation industrial development in this town and we're supposed to agree with that, I have an issue.
Okay. As far as taxes, I, I don't know this to be a fact, but I believe that there's an agreement between the...
It's thrown into the zoning ordinance.
But there is a tax, I believe there's a tax.
No, there's a ridiculous pilot thing that Dan threw in that has no basis in reality, but go on.
But, but that was it. It was just, I don't, I don't want to take up everybody's time, but it was really just a, a request for this letter so that we could complete our application.
Conversation, discussion?
Well, I'll make a motion.
I have, I have a...
That we, uh, write a letter not opposing this project.
I already have the design to ensure that the state is not promoting industrial development.
Is there a second?
Right here.
I didn't hear the motion.
Wants to write a letter not opposing this project.
Like, that's how they're classifying this development. That's how the state sees it, that's how everybody sees it except for... Like, and we've done this, the Rhode Island Rose has been nothing but rude, condescending. Every planning board meeting that I have gone to that Rhode Island Rose has been at, like, the town has bent over backwards for you people. Now you're asking us to bend over some more for you. And I have experienced nothing from the beginning of this project to now, but rudeness and just not wanting to follow the protocols that are in place for everybody else. Everybody else in this room would have to follow certain rules. They could not build across lot lines, but oh, we're going to close our eyes to Rhode Island Rose. Like, it's just a little bit ridiculous. And now you're asking for this too. You ask, you ask, you ask, and you're not giving anything back to this community, nothing. You're taking, 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 and I see how this works.
I'm not going to get into the debate on the approvals, but I know one of the stipulations was there's three lots that that structure sits on, and before you get your final approval and any permits, those three lots have to be merged into one.
That's correct, so, so one of these in the...
Before they should even be...
There were three conditions. One was to mention the review, one was the review process that the planning board went through. The third was that the lots, the merger had to be complete by closing in order for the planning board's review process to be approved and completed.
Thirty-eight stipulations, I think they pulled me in.
Yeah.
Within the review. So, so the, within the review section, which is number two, that was all of the studies.
No, and they're not.
Took about a year, year and a half.
Yeah, they're trying to circumvent all the fire codes.
Libya, wait. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is what, grants to help build it or for energy or for what?
Just strictly to build it, just strictly towards the completion of the project.
It's a lot of it towards energy conservation and stuff like that.
It's all of it, it's energy conservation, water conservation, it's, it's everything to do with controlled environment agriculture, nothing that's outside. We still have to fall within the scope of everything. Nothing that's outside, we still have to fall within the scope of everything that the planning board has said that needs to be met, all the conditions of the review.
All right, there was a motion to send a letter not opposing?
And I, I have another comment too, because Patty reminded me that they're also trying to circumvent all our local fire ordinances and our fire codes, and they are not being cooperative at all. And they wrote a nasty letter, one of many nasty letters that they have written. This is not something that we should support.
But before they build it, they will have to satisfy the state fire marshal, correct?
That's correct.
Allegedly.
It's all on, the state fire marshal and the local authorities.
That's correct.
And that's probably part of your list of, the list they have when you get final approval and can do anything.
After-
It's in the preliminary, correct?
That's correct. So they unanimously approved Tuesday to allow us to move forward with the condition of the lot merger and the fire approval. So if those things don't happen-
It ain't that.
And I, and I do know today that Tim Schartner and Norm, of course, has passed away, so he's got the trustee Zach, the son of Tim's cousin. I know today that they signed their agreement. But the, the only thing that was holding up the lot merger was improbate. And so they have to go through that process, but that has to be complete by close, otherwise, otherwise the town planning board's review's not complete.
Dan, I just want to explain to you why my vote will be no, only because I consider this to be far more than just perfunctory. And I really believe that we need, understand everything that you're telling us. Understand that you've walked into this project, it's been ongoing as you probably know for quite some time. And until I see something recommending such a letter from our planning board, I can't approve it, I'm sorry.
Can I, just one, one comment, I don't know how relevant this is, but one of the things coming from central Maine, which is, Exeter's like the big city compared to where I live. And, and I reached out to, I knew the gentleman that had run Backyard Farms, which is a forty-two acre greenhouse, exactly like ours, tomatoes, same builder, same everything, but it's forty-two acres, this is twenty-five. And so I called up the town, and I spoke with a woman, and I said, is there anybody in the town that can speak to, what's your experience been with this? And that was built in two thousand five, two thousand six, so they've lived with it for twenty years. And I received a call back from a gentleman named Jeff Drew, and Jeff, Jeff said, I think I'm probably the perfect person to speak with. He said, I was in the air force for twenty-five years, and my dad was the fire chief, he's eleventh generation Madison Maine. And he said, I was the fire chief here during the approval process. I was the, I was the chairman of the town planning board for our town. I'm currently the code enforcement officer for the town. And, and he said, I would tell you, and I can give you all his contact information. And he said, I live right around the corner from the place, and it's been nothing but a positive experience for us. So that's only one person, but I think he's a fairly credentialed person. And I'm happy to share his information, but if the council would want to reach out to somebody that's actually lived next door to us.
Okay, so you go ahead, Mike.
I just want to say that they, I agree with Olivia, that they didn't do, they didn't do what they should have done from the beginning. But from what I understand, they're beginning to do the proper processes and go through the proper processes now. And I don't, personally, I don't think that we should hold a grudge, that's how I kind of view this right now. And I think that a simple letter saying we don't object, they still have to go through all the process, it's okay with me.
And if I can say, it's not holding a grudge, they're continuing to-
I don't answer your question, this guy's a topic.
No, but they're continuing to ignore our fire chief. They don't care what our fire chief is saying about-
They're not gonna be able to ignore it for too long.
Well, they are, because they're circumventing and going to the state fire board where they hired a former member of the state fire board to argue their case there. So yes, they will get their approval and whatever our firefighters say will be ignored.
Could I briefly speak to that? So in the fire code book, and just explain briefly the process. In the fire code book, there's, it basically says you have to be within two hundred feet of an exit from the furthest point. And the reason, the way that they determine that is they assume a ceiling height of, you know, nine to ten feet, and they know the calculation, it's in a very good code book, of how long it takes smoke to go from nine feet down to six feet. And they also have published the average speed of a person, the slowest speed of a person. So that's where they come up with two hundred feet. So that's what they call the prescription method of determining if you meet the code. If, if there's anything different from those variables, so for example, our roof is twenty-three feet. By definition, the chief and the marshal of a town have to say no. Only the fire board can listen to what's called the performance method, where you demonstrate with a twenty-three foot ceiling the length of time it takes smoke to get down, they look at the average speed of a person, and then they would demonstrate a person won't have enough time. But a town on their own couldn't say, okay, I can do that, for good reason. They want to rely on a board to say, we accept this. So that's, that's the process, it's not, it's not that anybody wants to skirt. The other thing I'd say is it's a, you know, steel, glass, dirt floors, and the-
Google greenhouse fire right now and see how many industrial greenhouses like this have caught on fire. You'll see story after story after story after story, so that argument does not hold any order.
Olivia, this is an argument that's actually been done at the planning board. This, if you're for a simple letter-
Yeah.
No comment, opposed, well, you're bringing up a whole lot of planning board-
Yes, why I am voting no.
And the planning board approved it at preliminary with a list of stipulations, you have to meet all of it. It's a simple letter, do we, we have no opposition?
Yeah.
And I'll call the vote to send a letter of no opposition to-
And they also don't have the-
Rhode Island Grows, a letter of support or no opposition required for grant to Quonset Development Corporation. So, you had already made the motion, I'm sorry Diane, no, no. I think it was a second.
Yeah, it's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
No, for the record.
Okay, so it's three to two.
So we're gonna, we're gonna ask, who's gonna write the letter, what's the letter gonna be, it's gonna be a letter that says-
No opposition.
No opposition.
No objection, no.
Are you gonna write this letter? I would like my opposition or don't sign the council, sign Mike, Diane, and Dan, please.
Well, what are we supposed to, what are we supposed to sign it, how would you sign it?
Okay. I don't know, Mail Road Traffic applicant funded details and signage, is that you Calvin?
Well, I, yes it is, yes it is, and I want to say to a number of folks I think that are sitting out there that are concerned about Mail Road, thank you for your patience. I heard you, I think we all heard you at the last council meeting indicating that you wished it could be addressed and something could be done. Subsequently, I had a conversation with both the planner and our town sergeant. And what you see here on the agenda is a way that we thought at least a conversation could begin about something that might be done to assist and help on what you described earlier tonight, about six o'clock in the morning, clear violation of our noise ordinance. Obviously, our big problem here in Exeter is enforcing it, but that's why these items are on the agenda. So Dan, with regard to L, the applicant issue here, by applicant, I'm talking about the person who's, who's, who wants to construct the facility that's under construction. And my feeling, and I don't know how we could do this, is to let them know that it's an issue, that taxpayers and residents have come to us, it needs to be addressed, and we're asking them to assist with some kind of signage. Sko told me that trucks travel too fast, or certainly they make too much noise. And I don't know what the signage can do, I don't sure, but I think we need to address somehow that there is an issue here, it's a residential area, I don't know what to do. I don't know the answers.
So the speed limit on that, I don't remember what the, what is it?
Twenty-five. Is it twenty-five?
It's twenty-five, the trucks aren't really speeding, they're just loud.
Twenty-five.
No, they do speed.
They do speed.
Well, I was going there.
Go ahead, let's go.
Because I've been over there monitoring it, they are loud going up the hill, they're carrying heavy loads of gravel. They weren't speeding when I was there, if they're speeding, they're not speeding, I mean, everybody speeds on that road. Even if they're able to live on it.
So there is, or isn't a sign, doesn't really make a difference.
It says twenty-five miles an hour.
There's no sign, it's twenty-five in Rhode Island anyway.
No, there is a sign, there are signs out there, it says twenty-five.
Now, like the other, last month, there was some correspondence from the developer of the solar company that's building that, where they had had a meeting and told the people, don't come up that road before seven. I guess they're still doing it, and they were, the languages, and they would have them even go slower. I haven't seen as many-
Well, I know there's trucks going other places other than the solar field, they're going further up. I don't know where they're going, I didn't follow them because we were just wanting to bring solar-
This is not a public hearing, please.
Dan, I, I don't, I didn't see where a company, I've been reading this information.
That was in like last month's packet, there was a copy of it from the solar, I cannot remember the name of the company.
Nautilus.
That was Nautilus.
No, they were out in Jersey, I believe.
But I, well, I've read Nautilus Solar. Anyway, you say it's here, but if it's there, they may not, they may not be adhering to it. And the noise issue, six o'clock's too early, but as Sko said, maybe they're not going there. But still, that's not right, you know, that's not right when these people live so close. So we've got the noise ordinance, this kind of brings me into the next item as well, if we could. Because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, Dan, that if you can contact the state police, we know they're too busy, but if you can tell them we have, we have an issue, if they could assign someone even sporadically, maybe not every day, with, with a noise ordinance in hand or referencing, that they're not in compliance and they may well be fined if they're, if they're there. I don't know what the answers are, I wish I did, I wish I did.
So, may I speak? So, we're paying, I think we're paying something like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars this year for the state police. I don't, I don't know that it's a big problem or that they're too busy, I think that we can ask them, and I think that hopefully they'll comply with, I don't think we've asked them anything yet. It's more than a thirty year now, I don't think we've asked anything special yet.
Well, I don't think we have, I think we should.
We can now.
We do.
Okay.
Dan, I-
I will contact them, Cal.
I think it's what I think.
If I have a chance, I'll pull into that project and talk to the project manager.
Oh, excuse me.
Excuse me. Council speaking, it's not a public hearing, you can sit here and listen, Cal.
I thought because we were on the agenda from last month that we could talk.
You asked to be put on the agenda, we put it on, you could have spoke during public comments, signed up and spoken.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Okay.
But we have called the state police. They've been down there a number of times, but they don't have the manpower.
Okay, so I will call them, and like I said, I don't see as many vehicles going down there because probably, the one letter they were saying towards the end of November that we're gonna be wrapped up. I have not been into that project, I'll drive in and see, Cal.
What's that gonna do?
We asked for signage, no through trucking. And we- The decimal level on that road with this traffic is up to eighty-four point three.
Okay, stop. It's, you're, we're gonna be violating the open meetings law right now by letting all this dialogue go on. Now, I'm sitting here reading, and this is what caught my eye, there is an issue with, with the deep, with decimal limit in here. They're calling for decimal limit of fifty decimal, fifty-five decimals.
It's also a time, isn't it?
Do you know what the decimal level is right now of us? Fifty-five to sixty.
I can't, I can't speak to that, but Dan, I would like to say something about our bylaws. I'm pretty sure there's a section that says if one of us wishes to recognize someone who is attending, that the council can have them speak. I, I think these people, in my opinion, have been here, it's somewhere there, Dan, I, no, Dan, I understand.
Don't let it hit, Cal.
No, Dan, Dan, I understand what you're doing, we can't create free for all, but at the same time, if someone has something they'd like to share with us, I think we should listen. So, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm just saying that that's where I think we should let people tell us what they've experienced. But we hear you, and you say you've called, and they, and so you could say no through trucking, someone's got to enforce that, I'm not saying it's wrong, someone's got to enforce it. This young lady has paper under her hands.
Well, these are the regulations that, that I was given.
The town ordinance.
So that's what it says is supposed to happen, that it's not supposed to exceed. We didn't write them, this was written and approved by-
He's saying we're already that loud, which I don't-
What I did to research, because I was trying to get decimal levels, a normal conversation is fifty-five to sixty. Which is eleven, how about their rule of this ordinance, nineteen ninety-three.
So maybe you need to amend?
Oh, it definitely needs amended, yeah.
Seventy decimals is a normal conversation.
It blew my mind when I saw that.
He won't read it.
I got an issue with the ordinance.
The town, the town council, we're violating the ordinance. You can ask the state police to monitor the area between six and seven AM? Is that specific enough?
Yeah, and I think, and I think that if it comes from the council, not, not that you don't matter, but maybe they hear it from us because we're, we're paying, we have a contract with them, so maybe we can get them to know.
We could also-
I'm not law enforcement.
He doesn't-
I'm not law enforcement, though, I don't know that.
I was just saying, you, your old town side that says it's loud.
We could require the builder, the Nautilus Solar, to hire a detail to make sure the trucks do not go onto Mail Road before seven o'clock.
But he doesn't have authority to enforce.
We have the authority to ask them, to ask the solar company or to make them hire a detail to keep the trucks out, because if they're like, oh, these are private truck drivers that we hire, they just do what they want, they can cut them off, a detail could cut them off before they got to the road.
Why don't we do both, why don't we ask the state police, and why don't we, why don't we do that? Why don't we ask them?
Like, we might not be able to keep them off the road all the time, but at least until the seven o'clock.
I'm just gonna make one observation, as long as we're, this is an issue of great concern to these people. And I'm just going to say that the applicant engaged this company under the auspices of a solar ordinance that is no longer a fact, it doesn't help you, but a solar ordinance that's now in effect would have minimalized the, the size of what was happening there. But it, it doesn't help you. But things have changed. And, and solar companies were very quick to come in, assess towns in areas like ours and see where they might make some inroads. Guess what they found? They found Exeter. So yours is not the only situation where that's being, where that's happening. That, that doesn't help you. I just wanted to let you know. Because the public should know things have changed, but not in a way that helps you with yours.
How do we facilitate making this happen? The two things are contacting the state police.
Contact the state police.
Dan's going to contact the state police.
I'll contact the state police.
And then we need a letter.
And what exactly on the letter? You have a lot of ideas there.
A letter for what?
A letter to ask for a detail. I don't know if we can demand it, but just ask for them to keep the trucks off Mail Road until seven o'clock. AM.
Okay, detail to keep the trucks off Mail Road before seven AM.
Can you do that if you were asked? That would be very difficult to do because how are you going to stop them on Route Two? And what if they're not going to the solar field? Because US Foods go all, go all, all the way up to Gardner Road, to that nursing home. They, they come off of Route Two. They take Mail Road to Hoggals, Elder Gardner Road. And there's no ordinance. Just about every day.
In the morning like that?
Whenever hours. These US Food trucks going down one sixty-five, two thirty o'clock.
But if the solar company knows where the, the trucks are coming from, can they have them there?
If you're going to speak, you have to speak to the council. Don't engage with people in the audience. Now, we are violating our bylaws by doing that, so.
So we're going to ask them to call the state police. Detail to.
I will go over and see the project manager in Agro because there was correspondence like five or six weeks ago from that solar company where they had met with, did they meet with you people?
They spoke with us. We spoke to her and she was, she was very upset that they were coming before seven.
I remember it said they were going to tell them to slow down to fifteen miles an hour. Don't walk the road before seven. So obviously they're not holding up their end of the bargain.
I just want to make it known, we also, it's not just the solar. Why we wanted signage is because with darkness farm back going up, we don't know what that's going to entail with traffic. Mail Road is a residential road, not for eighteen-wheelers.
Mail Road is a farm road. I'll tell you that.
It's residential. And a farmer, I'm, I'm sorry, if a farmer wants to go down with machinery, that's fine. We're all for that, but not eighteen-wheelers every day. I have a list of times.
Well, it was up there last Thursday and Friday working. We were on the other end. The only two trucks I saw was the food service truck and the laundry truck, other than that. I'm on the other side of Kingston Road. That was it in a day and a half of big trucks. So they must all be going into the solar project, which allegedly is wrapping up the end of November, I can tell.
Is, is it fact that currently trucks can go down Mail Road?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know what we can, I don't, I don't see.
We could put a no-through-trucking sign up.
Then you're going to ask for trouble because Rob has taken money from state projects to fix roads that is funded by fuel tax from trucks. North Kingston did this and they either take the signs down or give the state back the money.
I would just like to ask Lynn in the letter that she writes to the company if she could include the fact that we've had a room full of people from the residents from the area that continue to be, express their concerns to us about the, the noise and disruption that these trucks cause. At least put it in writing. Let them know we have a room full of people that are complaining.
And when this solar farm came before the planning board, the man that owns the property, he said, all the neighbors love this. Nobody has an issue with this. So maybe you contact him and say, we have an issue with it.
We didn't even know what was going on on Mail Road.
I contacted the zoning inspector, but he didn't want to hear it.
Yeah.
He really can't do anything about it.
He's got a problem with enforcing.
He was supposed to be, I was told, in charge of noise, but.
I have noise issues that he ignores too, so I understand. Yeah.
Okay, so the letter's going to say, keep the trucks up. We, we should hire a detail to keep the trucks off the road before seven AM. And then not after.
I don't know how you're going to do that.
And that we had a room full of people.
Or this is response, this is response to a number of concerned residents.
But that's all we're asking to do is get, get higher details.
Right. Well, because people have come here.
They can't keep the trucks off the road before seven. Maybe hire a detail, like they need to come up, the company needs to be in contact with these truck drivers and make sure that they're responsible enough to keep them off the road. I don't know how to word it.
I'm good. Go.
Like, respect our community or something like that?
There's no, we're going to mandate respect.
Was that, is that a motion on the table for you to do the, a move that you correspond accordingly, Lynn?
So they've already.
I, I don't know.
Correspond accordingly with those.
No, if there was already a motion on.
So is there a second to Cal's most second?
You said we need to do it. Okay. We need to do it. I thought that's what he said she said, but I didn't, I didn't see it. So I don't know.
What, what?
What's the moment? No, it's okay.
So go now. What was the motion, Cal?
No, my mo, one doesn't hold on.
To correspond accordingly is what you said.
Yes.
And that means to ask the higher detail to keep the trucks off the road, Mail Road, before seven AM. And because, you know, and this is, we're requesting this out of the concerns of a room full of residents at the recent meeting, this meeting. That's the only two things I'm saying.
Right, okay.
Okay.
I'll make another motion once we've voted on this one.
I would word the residents of your province, please, in size.
Quote question, Dan?
We're going to vote.
No, let's vote on this letter.
All in favor?
I, I'd like to make another motion, Dan. I'd like that the council direct you to contact the state police, please, regarding this. I know you said you would, but we're, so you can tell them, the council's on my, whatever you call it, to help you something about it.
Second.
Aye.
Sco, I have a question for you at the end of the meeting before you leave. So, because I know there's a turnaround down there. Okay. Item N, IRS Cases 2023-0794 to-0797. That was your.
Oh, oh, thank you, Dan. Thank you. I, I placed that on the agenda only because Mr. Davis refers to it as before. I've been asked by, residents have asked me, what is that? And I said I didn't know. I did contact my accountant and asked if she was able to research.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. So she sent me a packet of information. It indicates that when, when investigations are initiated, as Mr. Davis suggests, that there is, there are awards that are granted if the investigation turns out to be appropriate. But what my accountant did find out that in two thousand twenty-three, fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-two cases were closed and eight percent of them were approved, approved awards. So lots of, obviously lots of reports, if you will, or investigations are initiated, but only eight percent in two thousand twenty-three. So, you know, this was, this is what she sent me, the IRS whistleblower office. And I asked her to see if she could locate Form 211, which is what is required for submission. She didn't see it and I, I said, please don't look any further, but thank you for. I asked her, this is my accountant, so she has no idea what issues might be addressed. But Lynn, I do have a favor of the council that allow me to ask you. In your conversations with Mr. Davis, and I know you have frequent conversations, if you're able to determine what these cases are or the nature of the cases, could you check on that form, please? Thank you. Sorry, counsel, but you recall this has been referenced publicly and this is the ongoing character assassination story that we have. So I'm just asking. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Number ten, unfinished business. A. Town of Exeter Cora Ordinance Proposed Amendments, Article 14, Building and Building Regulations, Article 2, Building Division 2, Permit Fees, Section 14-51, Schedule for Fees.
You have a draft proposed amendment that should address the issue that put the moratorium on in first place, and that was the high commercial rates. We did talk to, I did speak with the consultant who reviewed it and said that he set these rates sent to us for the industrial park and warehousing. So it's more of a mixed use development. And Kerry provided me with the, on the section number three, with that kind of language that the property, the use of the property is deemed by the tax assessor. And then the rate applied to what taxes says.
Yeah, all makes sense to me, but Dan, you skipped A, B, and C on purpose. Unfinished business, because with.
This would have to go, would this have to go to a public hearing to change these fees?
Oh, I thought permit fees were.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we did skip it.
Holy cow.
Well, let's finish with this one.
The other one's the D's.
We might as well finish it and then we can.
The titles are so similar.
That's D.
Let's go back.
Well, that's how I had my best.
Finish it. Let's finish it.
Well, we'll finish, we'll finish D. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
So to change this, you'd have to schedule a public hearing, correct?
Right, so this is just the, the, being presented for the first time.
Okay.
So someone has to present.
A move that we present this for public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we'll go to Town of Exeter Cora Ordinance Proposed Amendment, Article 14, Building and Building Regulations, Article 2, Building Divisions, Permit Fees, Section 14-51, Schedule Fees, please.
I did speak with the bill inspector and he was going to provide, there was some information from the state about the last time that the fees were approved. And it was quite a while ago, but I think it's more of a discussion that has to occur to what the state requires and what the town charges. And not far off, so it's not, and that's excluding any other fees, just the regular traditional. Fees never in the system. I don't know where we're going to go with it. It's really him to present it to a council, and then the council.
So leave that on there for next month. Okay. All right. Next item. Item B, Sharon McLean, Wood River Wild and St. River Stewartship Council, Du Temple Road, Frail Project. That was done there for.
Well, she was supposed to come to the library board meeting, meet with the board trustees, but we had, did not have a warrant. But also she was required according to the minutes to meet with the planner. And I don't believe she's done that yet.
Okay. We'll leave that on there for next month, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, C, Town Treasurer, Request for Clarification, Compensation to Board of Canvas Members for Training.
So I, we reached out to every other city in town in Rhode Island to see what they did, how their structures, the, the fees were structured for board of canvassers, their stipends, and then if there was any extra compensation for training. And really, there is no consensus. I tried to make a spreadsheet, but it was so all over the place that it really, and you know, and obviously the bigger cities with bigger populations don't really apply. But most of the, a lot of the cities and towns do include any sort of training with their stipend. Once in a while you will get some that will compensate, but really it wasn't, it really wasn't a thing. The consensus was. So, I mean, if you want to still compensate them for training outside of their normal day and hours, I would suggest you use the clerical fee. And so then if it's half a day, they get paid for three hours, five hours, six hours. If you want to compensate them over and above their nine to twelve that they get a stipend for on a Tuesday. I think that would be the.
That's, that makes sense to me. I mean, we asked them to be there at that time frame, but then when the state says that they can come see us, it's not a huge amount of money and it's not a large expense. I don't see any problem with it.
Didn't we, we talked about this before. We voted on something other than that before?
So if I may, you had voted on a full day's training of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per person if it was out of their normal Tuesday day. This had, the one that they were asking for happened to be on a Friday and it happened to be all day. But then I asked for additional clarification because what if it's half a day? What if it's Zoom?
An hour.
What if it's an hour? What if it's?
On a Friday.
Right, right. What if it's, you know, on a Tuesday when they normally meet, but it goes beyond twelve? So there's so many different, you know, scenarios that we could come up with that it would be nice just to have like some sort of.
The civil, it's a similar hourly rate than the one twenty-five. And how many hours they do it.
Depending on how many hours.
So it's very similar.
So like I said, a lot of, a lot of places do, you know, lump that in and as to like, you know, you get a stipend, training is part of that stipend. Some of them are more than ours, the stipends.
Maybe a motion.
Do you want direction from us? Would you like direction from us?
I'll make a motion then to pay them the clerical fees if they're doing it half a day or if they're on Zoom meeting for an hour. Clerical fee per hour.
Sixteen fifty?
Sixteen.
It's probably best to keep the actual number out of it because if that clerical rate goes up, then we have to go back and change this. So whatever the clerical rate is.
The clerical rate increases.
Do you want to make the motion pay clerical fee per hour for any hours beyond nine to twelve?
On Tuesday.
Yes?
Yes.
For training only.
For training only.
Seconds, if you don't have one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we did D.
So this can come off the agenda now, huh?
What's that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that can come off. Uh, E, Status, welcome signing in and out of towns.
No update, but there's also a change in the sign, the signs now. We'll have to see if that will be made to match.
You mean the black Cadillac?
Yeah.
Black with white, right? Welcome to Exeter.
Yeah, Republic Works, Request for Guidance, In the Five Whiskey Ride. That's all done, right?
It is.
You want me to tell them the new story?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about the old story? It's all set, right?
It's finished. And was it last week you got the phone call?
Yeah.
Someone has installed a basketball court in the road.
West Shore, West Shore.
Rob went down, he's had this survey, the basketball court is on there a lot.
Yep.
But it gets better. Now the school buses refuse to go down there because they can't turn around.
They've always turned around. It never goes any of the down there. We achieved with what we did, that actually had the bus company come down on their spare time, and we got it turned around, so they were gonna be able to come all the way down instead of just turn around at Birch. And a gentleman, somebody has the right to put up a basketball court, and it's there now, and it's, it's intentional, and it was to stop the bus from turning around.
Why would anybody do a thing like that?
Good, good question, I mean, really. So, there's a dispute going down. It's a community of, um, immature levels of back and forths going on over there, and I want to be a part of it. I really don't. I'm frustrated. I did our obligation. It's the best it can be. I actually got a bus turned around. They were gonna be able to pick up this little kindergartner, and that resident's not happy because now they can't, so the bus company actually called me tonight and said that that resident's calling them, saying it's their problem, so he says, "Be aware, they're gonna be calling you back because now it's gonna be my fault that I can't get a bus turned around there that never turned around there before." So it's craziness over there. A lot of instinct.
We can take this off the agenda. We're all not...
Thank you.
Okay. Damage to town property, mail road, we'll leave that on because that's ongoing, so.
Yep.
Okay.
The last I heard about that was, uh...
Well, we got a letter, we got a letter without correction.
And they agreed to do it. August fourteenth, they said they would fix it.
Yep. But, okay, we'll leave that on, that part of it. But, uh, G, status, for our one two fifty commission, Exeter Historic Preservation Commission.
Dan, I can just tell you, I have talked with a member of the subcommittee that is working. They are meeting, they're going to be having a...
Thank you.
They're gonna be making their presence known at the Library Fall Festival. You know, they're, they're working on stuff.
Okay, all right. H, status, town building uses and improvement plans, one six seventy-five, Tenrod Road, request to use arcapunks addition, Exeter Court's Office, new office.
So, um, we had, um, always, you know, we have the, upstairs, we have Dixie and Jessica and Bill. Jessica has no privacy, and when they're all up there talking, they're talking over each other and can't hear on the phone and things. So we had this thought that if we built an addition in front of the vault, just a one office.
Move out.
Square up that corner, in front of the vault. Put me there, we could bring Jessica down to my office where she could have privacy, and that would free up upstairs.
A little bit more room.
Yeah, I spoke to Ron DeFrancesco, and he wrote me up some plans and pricing. And he says it would be two forty-five a square foot. No federal state funds, not union labor. It would be forty-six thousand dollars.
How much can you guys work with that?
In, in the...
Enough.
In our budget, we have about six hundred thousand to spend if we don't accept the grant.
Okay. If we accept the grant, we can flip the money for the grant to have more open money? Is that what you're saying?
That is my understanding.
I know we're doing the addition, I'm sorry, the building over there, but it could be quite a few years. And this problem is, you know, ongoing. And they've expressed it, you know. Right, Jessica, you could use some privacy?
It doesn't hurt to go out to bid. Doesn't, you don't need to act on it.
Yeah, we can go out to bid and see what you want to do after that.
I thought we're moving your department to the annex. Why would we spend fifty dollars?
We made a vote, we made a vote to not move anybody up there until the construction's done. And which means you're gonna have to do an addition and everything, I think.
We made a vote to do...
That's what we're saying, well, that one's going towards that.
Nobody could move.
What's, what's...
As we said so.
We did make a vote that we weren't gonna move anybody until construction was done.
Well, it would, it would hurt to go out to bid and, you know, have to act upon it just to see what it would cost in case this, at the eleventh hour, we need to accommodate.
As we speak, so.
I mean, we could be, I don't know how many years we're gonna be, and we... Can I say something?
I can take a question from you because it's discussing you, so. Ace, I'm not taking questions from the public on this, no.
That kind of like save you a lot of time and money.
Go right ahead, man.
It's a non-conforming lot, it's a non-conforming building. It's the same issue with the addition. You can't expand a non-conforming use. It's gonna push you closer to the lot line. And it's the same reason why that building couldn't, that building couldn't be expanded in the first place. It's violating zoning.
But if we went to zoning, we could ask for variance.
Not, not for non-conforming use.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Um, if we are not gonna be using that building for my office and we're gonna spend money to make an addition there, is it possible that we can make an addition here at the library for my office where it's a more attractive to my department?
The premises rule. When, when, when did it change that she wasn't gonna be in that building? I don't understand. Is that a term or something? What we did is, everybody's wanting to move in that building as soon as we got ahold of it. And we had discussed that. We're getting a plan together before anybody moves in. Cal, Cal, were you involved in a, a small committee and didn't you?
No, no, my, my recollection of the vote was that no, no one could move into the new building until the council gave them green light. I did not...
That's what I recommend, I recommend.
I did not recommend, I don't recall construction, but I think we've got something coming up here, don't we, on the agenda? So, the building, I mean, I, I don't know Ace's point. I guess the building, the whole building is non-conforming. So we might as well, I don't mean to say this, I, I'm not trying to be snarky, but we might as well make it a little bit more non-conforming if there's a...
You don't want to spend any money on it.
Oh, stop that, Maria, don't smirk like that. Now, maybe we could go to the, maybe go to the zoning board and say, "Look, it's already a problem, but these people need some space and they need it now." As far as the library here, I don't, I don't know. I know you do a lot of stuff here. So I realize why you're asking. I don't, I don't know where that could be.
I mean, I prefer to be in the new building.
Yeah, well, a lot of people do. Well, we're gonna talk about it.
Want me just remove it?
I'm gonna get a miss.
We'll leave it on there for now, so, whatever they can change. Uh, number two, seven forty-two, Tenrod Road.
Wait, um, B, status on the roof replacement?
Oh, yes, we talked about that.
Stop that wrong. So, um, I've been in touch with the, the group company that we appointed, TK, and they filed for the permit, and they will be doing this, I think, between, you know, September twenty-third and October nineteen, somewhere in there, they're gonna be giving the road. Just to let you know. Okay. All right.
Uh, okay, Ken, seven forty-two?
Yep, so we met with, uh, the, you were there, right?
Me, no.
Paul Soriano, he was the one that previously provided the plans when we were gonna purchase the building, take it up in two thousand fourteen. And so he provided late Friday a proposal to be able to move forward. And we're gonna have to talk to Jim about it, but it's a good proposal. It's, it's gonna save the town a lot of money. Hopefully we can get them on the MPA or some other process without the taxes. But he's already done a lot of the work, as you know, two thousand fourteen, on building itself, and going back in, kind of redesigning of what we're thinking. Just, we wanna get him engaged. But if not, the R I P will go out and, you know, bring us right. I think we have, with the arcapunks, it would be enough to pull us right to the construction phase with the consulting. And that way, we just have to build a budget on how much construction we want and, um, and how you're gonna pay for it. So I'm not taking all the op money, you're just saying we want six hundred thousand to reconstruct this building. There's a lot more involved, and if you really wanna do it right, and you wanna get everybody in there, where everybody has their nice offices. It's gonna take some work, but it's, it's bigger, it's nicer than where we were at, and it's gonna be a lot more efficient and safer.
Okay.
Um, the electrician, I know with him, and he's gonna go stop fixing the, um, give me a price first and stop fixing all the deficiencies found in the building.
Okay. Keep it posted.
Yep.
Uh, communications, I think we only had...
No, I just, I didn't hear any...
Number two and number three.
Yeah, and, and my, my, my request is that those two communications be put aside till we meet on, on the twenty-third, the smart place.
Okay. All righty. That brings us to executive session, and before we go into executive session, folks, we'll take a thirty-five minute recess.
Just, yes, and that's fine, but I just have a quick comment. I, I wish it could have read, and I didn't read it, I didn't see it till over the weekend. I wish it could have said job status instead of job performance, only because, well, it's the status of the position.
Took that language from you.
From some...
Statue.
From the statue.
They picked the statue.
Well, I, I think people might have thought it didn't bode...
Doesn't sound nice.
Doesn't bode well for...
We're not firing it.
What I read, it didn't make any sense to me based upon what I knew.
Well, I made a motion, but no, it's all favorable, I, we kept it covered.
I don't wanna go over it. I wanna get this done.
Was there a vote? Was there a vote?
I guess, look at me here.
Well, he only had, he had...
Yeah, we want this door shut.
He had Peter's shit.
Hey, can I hit bottle water in here for Diane?
Yeah, in the...